Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us after a beautiful spring day. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, April 27th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Again, thank you all for joining us. Another great spring day. Chairperson's report, I will make a couple of comments. A big thank you to the Darien Health Department, everyone at Town Hall. A special thank you again to Alicia Kosucci and the administration here. We had another successful Teacher Second Vaccination Day last Saturday. So another milestone in this COVID year. But a thank you to all that participated and helped organize that. I believe from the First Selectmen to the Health Department, to our Superintendent, again to the nursing staff, Alicia Kosucci and company. But thank you. We accomplished that on Saturday, so we move forward. Break is coming up. I wish everyone a healthy and safe break. I would ask that you, and I know Dr. Adley will touch base on this, just look at and remind yourself of the guidelines when it comes to travel. While we've got a lot of people vaccinated, I think we still need to use caution and follow some of those guidelines when traveling. I would also ask too, you know, when it comes to your children, if they are not feeling well or you are pending getting results from a test, a COVID test, that you make sure you keep the students out of school and at home. I know we want all our students in school and we've made so much progress. And we're one of the leading districts. We're having our children in school. But if you're pending a COVID test, your child's not feeling well, please keep them at home. All right? It's the best way to work through this and to continue challenging with testing and quarantining. So I thank you for all that. Thank you also. Last night, we moved forward the Board of Ed budget and the Board of Finance voted to move forward to the RTM, the final piece of the budget process. So the Board of Finance moved forward a Board of Ed budget of $106,624,199. So I want to thank the individual school leaders, principals, assistant principals, teachers, Dr. Adley, the Cabinet, a special shout out to Rich Rudel, a shout out to the Board here for all the hard work during the budget season. It's not an easy process. It seems the minute we finish, we start again. But that's the process we go through. So a lot of hard work, a lot of good questions, a lot of hard questions, and a lot of work done to move the budget forward. So thank you to the Board of Finance for all your questions, for listening to us and moving that forward. It continues to provide and invest in the education of our students and that's what's important. We continue to move the... Next step on that is the RTM meeting, which will make sure everyone knows the timeline of that. So with that, I will move it over to public comment. Michelle?
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the Participants icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the Raise Hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, and/or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Jocelyn Delancey, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hello, everyone. Jocelyn Delancey, 110 Commons Park North, Stanford, Connecticut. I just want to take a minute to thank the town, especially Alicia, everybody involved, the town residents who volunteered, the teachers who volunteered. Thank you, thank you for our vaccine clinic on Saturday. It was seamless, it was safe, and it was a wonderful feeling to get that second dose in. I also want to thank the town for the people who made positive comments and supported us through our vaccine reactions and wished us well. And our schools are now in a safer place because Darien made that a priority. And so I can't thank you enough. I think the teachers can't thank you enough for the ease and access of our vaccine clinic. Thank you, thank you to everyone involved. That being said, we are not out of the woods or on the other end of this pandemic. And I just want to make a public plea to make sure that we are all still staying safe. I know all stakeholders, teachers included, we are feeling good, we are feeling comfortable, we are in school and we are doing well. But a quarantine for any student or teacher has an impact and it's heavy. So when we go out and we make our choices, please remember that while you might be vaccinated, maybe somebody else isn't, or maybe somebody's family member isn't, and our students certainly aren't. So let's just make sure that we stay safe, we stay mindful, we stay kind, and we stay happy. So thank you so much, Darien. It is a pleasure and I am so proud to work here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Delancey.
Belinda Fang, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mrs. Fang.
Good evening. I'm Belinda Fang. I live at 22 Beach Drive. I'm coming to you tonight as a parent who acknowledges that in this pandemic school year, we have already asked you to do the impossible. However, if I may make one more plea with you, it is that you will please dedicate the time to look back and act forward. Look back at all of the awful, hurtful, and despicable instances of racism that have occurred in our schools and act forward in ensuring that our teachers are equipped in having the resources and training in knowing how to have these difficult conversations with our children in the classroom. Our students need to understand why racism has no place in our schools, our town, in our nation, and in our lives. There have been innumerable hate crimes that have occurred in our country. The videos are extremely difficult to watch, but I hope that you are noticing that many times that there are silent bystanders who do nothing to help and do nothing to stop the cycle. The media is silent, the leadership is silent, and there is just painful silence all around. I don't point this out to shame anyone, but I hope that this stands out to you. Silent grownups don't come from out of nowhere. We raise them. It starts in our homes and it starts in our schools. Please do not be silent with my children. Please do not be afraid. Please work with us as parents. None of us know what to say or even what to do, but we know that silence cannot be the solution. Please do not shy away from having talks about racism, unconscious bias, or injustices because you want to spare my children anxiety. Clearly, this silence comes at the expense of them inevitably growing up to be ignorant or worse yet, indifferent adults. Will you please do this hard work with us? Will you please elaborate on what the district will do to ensure that diversity, equity, and inclusion are at the forefront of our children's education? Please help us take on this responsibility together.
Thank you, Mrs. Fang.
Rochene Beccarelli, unmuted and recognized.
Mrs. Beccarelli, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. I can't start my video, but I'm happy to speak.
Yeah, please.
Oh, start, okay. Yes, my husband Joe and I are here. We would like to amplify the perfect articulation that Mrs. Fang just provided. We support every word that she just shared. And along with her and a number of other parents, we are connecting the dots on the parent's side as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion and figuring out together how we can find each other and determine what needs to be done. And of course, provide a mass to the school and the districts, the district and the schools, I should say, to support you. We are so pleased to have seen the strategic plan goal to support and encourage all shareholders to embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion. And from our standpoint, we're looking to understand what is going to be done about that next as Mrs. Fang asked as well. How are we going to establish a baseline? What is the plan going to look like? What are we going to measure? There's a huge amount of pent-up demand, I guess I could say, from the parent's side. Again, as we've recently connected the dots on this and we love to understand from the district how you propose to move this forward and what we can do to help with that. We're behind you. We understand that in our community, it is not an easy process and we understand there's the potential for a lot of backlash. But we're here and the best way forward in our view is to, again, band together and continue to make progress over time by finding a way forward. So we're here. If there's anything else you have in the way of questions, but on the parent's side, we will continue to push forward and provide suggestions and recommendations. And we encourage you to come to us and partner with us as well in doing that so that we can support each other.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Beccarelli.
Our pleasure.
Can I ask you your address, please?
Oh, yeah, I apologize. It's 29 Bailey Avenue in Darien, 06820.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Jennifer Sherman, you are unmuted and recognized.
Jennifer Sherman, 10 Sylvan Road. Swastika found scratched on wall at Darien School. What happened last week cannot happen again. And if it does, we need to be better prepared to inform and support our children and equip our parents and teachers to lead our students through an uncomfortable but important topic the right way. After thinking about how diversity and inclusion fit into our Darien community, a community that I cherish and that I am very proud to be a part of, I was elated to meet with one of the most inspired, respectful, and enlightened group of Darien parents recently, all who have raised their hands to lead our elementary school PTOs, diversity and inclusion efforts. We have no agenda other than to make our schools a better and safer place to educate and prepare our students to understand and embrace the reality of diversity. We are encouraged by the administration's commitment to fostering a culture that promotes wellness, diversity, and inclusion, and we look forward to working with you on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Sherman.
User M Lee, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, I don't know. Let's, let me try to... I'm trying to start the video, but it's not working. But can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mrs. Lee.
Okay, hi.
Now we can see you.
Okay, great. My name is Michelle Lee. I live at 7 Berry Lane in Darien. I have three boys and, well, will soon have three boys in the Tokonik School. And as many of you know, the elementary schools' PTOs have established committees devoted to promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion among our school community. While each school is developing initiatives unique to their school, we aim to provide a space to support, connect, and engage on these topics. And we're aligned on a vision for district-wide collaboration and communication. Events nationally and locally continue to illuminate the fact that silence will not achieve the change and progress we all hope to see for our community and beyond. As these committees have connected over the last month to discuss ways that we can work together in this opportunity, we'd like to express our hope that the Board of Ed will work with us in furthering these conversations and keeping it a priority. I also just want to add that, you know, my three boys, they're third-generation Chinese, Korean Americans. They have never been to China or Korea. They only speak English. They don't, they don't have had a chance to learn any Chinese or Korean. And, you know, this is the only home they know. They were born in Stanford and we moved to Darien two years ago. And it saddens me that, that despite America truly being their home, that because of the way they look, there are many people in this country, and certainly I hope not in this community. But, you know, unless we discuss these issues, I would want my kids to feel always welcome and know that this is their home and that they belong here regardless of how they look. And I can assure you that my children ask me about, you know, diversity issues, the way they look, why they look different, why people make certain comments, why things are happening all the time, not my four-year-old, but certainly my six- and eight-year-olds. And I do hope that the Board of Ed will work with us on furthering these efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lee.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Great. Thank you all for joining and thank you all for the public comment. Before I move over to the Superintendent's Report, I'd like to just make a quick amendment to the agenda. Later on in the agenda, under the Personal Action Report, we are going to appoint the Position Director of Elementary Education. So we'll have that appointment later on, but I wanted to have a motion to amend the agenda. Mr. Maroni, second, Mrs. Ackman, all in favor? That is unanimous, and we will do that appointment during the PAR section of the meeting. Thank you very much. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Adley.
Yes, good evening, everybody. And as our parents eloquently said, this past week, we were saddened to learn about a swastika was being discovered at Holmes Elementary School. We do know from our past experiences that the district and the community are not immune to issues of prejudice or discrimination, sadly, even at the elementary school level. Incidents of this nature always require immediate and ongoing opportunities to educate, particularly our younger students, and to send the unequivocal message that such actions are wrong and are hurtful. Sentiments of hate, racism, and antisemitism at any level, in any form, have no place in our schools. I'm proud to say that the Board recently adopted vision, mission, values, and goals, specifically identified the importance of fostering a school culture that promotes integrity, diversity, inclusion, and respect. This will be an ongoing challenge and focus for the schools. For the Curriculum Office and the principal at elementary school, followed lately, will be, actually has followed up with instructional and educational experiences for the students with the use of our school psychologists. We will continue to do so with looking at opportunities, again, to work with NCCJ and also the ABL organization. But this incident also serves as a reminder for all of us as adults, as educators, community members, that we must be the role models for all our children, providing guidance and education on such difficult issues of diversity, prejudice, prejudice, and acceptance. We will be committed to continue to partner with our PTOs and the community at large in addressing these important issues for our children and to ensure that our schools are places where students are free to learn in a safe and welcoming environment. I look at a couple of steps that the Board and the administration has embraced as part of its plan. That includes equity committees to initiate and continue the work, training for our staff in that capacity, and others, and other action steps along the way. So I want to reassure our community that this is a priority. The Board has identified that as a priority, and we're going to work at it conscientiously and as best manner as we can to present the right role model for our kids. It's interesting. One of the things you learn, well, I guess my mind says, I don't want to go too far, but one of the things I've learned through this pandemic is the voice of the young people have spoken, and particularly so our graduates. Their voices have risen in terms of providing feedback as to things that are important to them as they have moved on in the school system, and this is one of those things that was identified. But again, thank you to our parents and to everyone who's committed to supporting a better environment for our kids. Again, thank you for this, as was mentioned, for the staff vaccination clinic, particularly Health Director Alicia and all the volunteers. I mean, they just did a tremendous job. And actually, our teachers, we volunteered through both of the sessions. We even had a wee bit of violin music being planned, but when it was, when it was the Titanic news, we had to turn it off. But that was tremendous, and we'll talk a wee bit more about student vaccination clinics when we get to the next agenda item. I'm pleased to share that the school district received the distinction of best, one of the best communities for music education in 2021. Congratulations to Colin Thompson and her staff. That recognition came from the Mann Foundation, which is a topic group that recognizes the music industry. We were one of 23 districts in Connecticut, and it's particularly pertinent given this particular year. If you're going to earn something, a recognition. It's particularly hard to do that in a pandemic year, but thank you to everyone in the department. On Monday, we had a little bit of a schedule change. As you know, I want to thank the parents for accommodating and the late schedule change at the Royal Elementary School, Middle School, and the High School. At the time of the decision to close the schools was primarily the distribution of absences that led to the closure of these schools, and nearly all of the absence were attributable to the second vaccination shot. The High School continues to work on a couple of matters, including the prom. They are deciding between June 4th or 5th. We hope to wrap that up before, hopefully before the break. But they'll be meeting with the students and we'll settle on a time and date for one of those, for one of those opportunities, of course, the fifth. And we continue, actually, the middle school and the high school have sort of settled on some dates. I'll let them share them out with their communities. Now that they have settled on some dates, and I think you'll see some nice new traditions in there too, the rollovers from COVID, I'll let them share those. The dates will now be established for the elementary ceremonies. So those, that information will be forthcoming. The GSA Club at the High School are planning activities to participate in Pride Month. I will say that we had a discussion practically about the flag. The flag will not fly on the flagpost, but the GSA Club are planning activities to participate in that month, and we'll see what the students are actually planning and what way they want to recognize it. The Darien Music Department, we just mentioned them, but they are going to, we're going to have a couple of opportunities to perform outside. So as we continue to expand some of these, we can do so with the outside performances and with the appropriate mitigation strategies. Testing season is upon us. At the end of April here, we've got S bags and then clearly the SATs, AP exams, and so on are happening for our upperclassmen, and we wish them well in that. There's a lot going on in the district, and there's update on the Middlesex Principal search. That is, we have applicants, and the week of the 19th, we will be interviewing. Congratulations to Mary Michelson on her announcement of retirement. And we will be, we have actually posted for that position. And we're, we have conducted interviews for the Elementary Assistant Principal. So we're well on the way in the process. Parents, our parents, staff members are a part of those processes. The Governor Lamont did announce that there were two opportunities for state grants for school security. And we will be applying for some of those, and we'll keep the Board apprised of that. The gifted, the evaluation program for the gifted is underway. And just by way of an update, focus group meetings, class observations are presently taking place. The RTM meeting is meeting tonight, and if they have any questions, given it was a conflict with our meeting, they said that they would pass those on. There's a couple of meetings coming up, and the meeting for the planning zoning is tentatively planned for April 20th, and that is to do with the basement. So I'm just sort of taking the lead between the planner's own RTM, how we have to go through that particular process. The First Selectmen and Town Administrator visited the offices down below. And given that we're using those for storage also, their request was just made to, since we are using, we may as well use it the whole thing. So that was the request that went back to the Board of Selectmen. I would ask, we are looking to schedule, I think it's Tuesday, the, oh, actually, 29th for the, I'm looking for a date for the public hearing, and I think it's Thursday, 29th. If I haven't seen it on this schedule, I haven't found it, but it's meant to be, I think, Thursday, April 29th, as possible. So we can look at that and I can send something out just to check on it, but that would be the date we proposed to have the public hearing. And with that, I wish all the families an enjoyable, safe, and socially distant spring recess.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Just to confirm, that public hearing would be with respect to the renovation of the three elementary schools, Henley, Royal, and Holmes, the facility project that has been moving forward. Thank you. Approval of Minutes. It's requested that the Board approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on March 23rd, 2021. I have a motion, Mrs. Parent, second by Mr. Maroni. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. The Board Committee Reports. Presentations and Discussions, Darien Public Schools Status Update. Dr. Adley.
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot happening. Again, this gives us a wee opportunity to reflect on a couple of things this evening, and we may go around about each of these topics, but the variety of things that we do need to discuss. I have updated this from your most recent one because the most recent one went out before we, the long weekend. So we've updated to reflect where we are. As you know, just by the updates that you get, we have increases in the number of students contacts and the number of students who are being quarantined. That is reflective of the state, it's reflective of the county. I should share with you, this map used to be different, right? And if I were to show you like the couple of maps in sequence, you can see like, first you're counting, just pushing up through the upper part of the state. Now you're back to red again with just an indication that we have significant challenges and we're not out of the woods yet. The Connecticut's Department of Public Health are concerned about that pattern, that we're over 100 cases there. So that's particularly challenging. Actually, I say this in a tongue-in-cheek, and I don't mean to be dismissive about it, but in some ways, it's generally safer to travel outside of Connecticut than being in it at the minute in some ways, right? I don't want to like be used against me in that regard, but there is some truth to that. So we just have to be very conscious of kind of where we are. These are the numbers again for Connecticut, and first, and they have been steadily increasing. Here you can see just a wee picture of what we're talking about. And those are significant changes, particularly in the last couple of weeks, in the most recent weeks. The number of remote learners has increased, and that's only been reflected by the classes that have come in and out, grades K and 8, I think. I think they were the only ones who didn't change too much, and the others changed significantly. So it's just reflective of people quarantining, requesting to quarantine, and actually, actually, remote learning also, but most of them are just being requested to quarantine, so. So I'll just go back to, just to talk about a couple of points. Staff and student vaccinations. David Anoff, who's the Health Director, said he'd be here about a quarter of eight or so, so he may be here. But I just want to recognize David and Alicia. There, we are ready. Behind the scenes, we've done planning, worked with the Department of Public Health. We're not late to the scene with it. We followed very closely in terms of preparation, if we can, we actually do these vaccinations for our students. We cannot. We've been told we cannot. The state decided that they would vaccinate those districts that are allowance districts first. They are having difficulty even projecting whether they're going to be able to get the Pfizer vaccine in a significant dose and when they would get that. So the best that we can probably project is probably mid-May. And if David's here and Alicia will be here, they can sort of just confirm those particular dates. But we have passed on the information, we have just over 100, 900 students who may be eligible to do that, should they want to do that, and we stand ready to provide those clinics. We were talking about Friday or Saturdays. We looked at a particular date, but there's no point looking at that date, get people all worked up that there's a date and not been able to do it. So until we get our permission, I would ask just for the community to just understand and we're, we stand ready to do it. all worked up that there's a date and not been able to do it, so until we get our permission, I would ask just for the community to just understand, and we're, we stand ready to do it. And I thank David and Alicia for, for their state of readiness for that. The travel policy was changed on well, Saturday morning, just as the way it goes, or late Friday, as soon as you send something out, the CDC issued something else the next day. The main thing that they issued was the idea of your, if you're fully vaccinated, that you didn't need to quarantine. We have been, we have been supporting and encouraging people to follow the CDC regulations, as have the Connecticut Department of Public Health, as have our local health officials. For us, this is a wee bit of a conundrum. And there are some inconsistencies along the way. We did just today conclude the survey for our staff to see how many people were traveling. And we also did, we sent out an information today, I think you saw that a survey to staff or to parents to see how many students may need to be remote, go remote learning if they have to vaccinate, or sorry, if they have to quarantine when they come back, because if that's the case, our plan has been and is at the moment to do in-person learning. But if that's not the case, I don't want on, over the weekend to have to shoot, how all the scrambling going on and teachers not knowing who to prepare for. We have special needs students, we have grouping patterns with, it's just not a matter of like a last minute, teachers do have to make some special preparations for how they do the instruction with all the students, so we would like to advise them, if that's the case, by Friday, that to expect that these, these are the students who may need to go remote learning. These are recommendations, so a, a parent may or may not decide to go along with recommendation, that has been our practice to go along with the recommendations of the CDC. Again, that's according to our health professionals, it's according to the Connecticut State Department of Health. I called the epidemiologist two days ago, Alicia called the epidemiologist today. They are strongly encouraging that we go down this, this avenue and support these recommendations for health and safety, so that is what we have been planning to do. I really don't want to call someone at the last minute and say, I can't cover classes, right, or we have to close school. Hence, we surveyed the staff to see how many people would be traveling because they would actually have to quarantine, because they're not technically quarantined until the seventeenth. And that's directed right from the State Department of Public Health. You need the fourteen days afterwards to technically be qualified as a quarantine, so if you travel, if you travel in that time period before those fourteen days are up, you don't, that doesn't qualify you for being quarantined, you have to then, sorry, that doesn't qualify you for being vaccinated, you have to quarantine thereafter. Which seems like there's so many inconsistencies. Actually, a couple of weeks ago, when I know I've been vaccinated with the staff also, I could travel to a nearby state, stay there and come back and it was okay. Now I can't, and I have two shots. So, and that applies to our parents, it applies to our teachers. I, I don't feel ethically and morally that we can recommend people not to go along the lines of supporting the recommendations, the health and safety recommendations, those are the ones that we have been following the whole way along. They're the ones that our health officials are purporting to us. So what does that leave us? It leaves me with looking at fundamentally, can I cover classes? That's the main question I have to answer. Well, why did you survey then the parents? If I can get across the first bridge, I don't want to be scrambling without the information about the children, the children, particularly the elementary schools, will, will go home with their to-go bags, they'll have their computers in the event that we have to make a decision. Now, the decision will probably be made tomorrow, in all likelihood, given the information, the data has, has come in from our staff, and I'll meet with our, our public health officials. So at the moment, I'm planning in person, but I will not be surprised if we have to go remote for the week. That's a distinct possibility. But I just have to stay tuned for that, for tomorrow, and I would like to share whatever the situation is with our parents tomorrow evening. I, if you look around the respective schools, a lot of them are going in person. When I call the superintendents and ask them, oh, could you tell me how you're dealing with this? Some say ignore it, and some say, well, I'm just going to wait and see what, what, how many. I don't want to wait and see, I mean, because I don't, I don't think, I don't think we should do that or need to do that, we can avoid doing that. So that's kind of where we are with the current status of that. Alicia, hopefully I have described that accurately.
Yep.
Is David here?
David is here.
Oh, yes, okay, so David, if you, if you want to speak to that any more than I have, and the board may have a question or two, I don't know, of me or of you or, or of any of us.
Well, I think you explained the situation very articulately, and yeah, it's it's, it's a tough, as you say, conundrum. Lots of shoulds and woulds from the state, and it leaves us in a position of having to make some, you know, pretty, pretty tough decisions on the fly. But and it is sort of ironic, as you said, that Connecticut has some of the highest positivity rates right now, and destination states may be a lot less risky than staying at home. But the travel advisory is still something that we have to contend with, so it, it does present an issue when we return, and it was, it was, if we were another week sooner with the vaccine to the teachers, which we couldn't get in time, then, you know, it would be a different story with respect to teachers and they're fully vaccinated and protection status, but the reality is, as you said, they will not be fully vaccinated until vacation basically is over, so they're still subject to quarantine upon return. And as far as vaccine and vaccine for students, Alicia and I are working on that, and we hope to have an announcement soon, and I'll turn that over to Alicia.
Um, Alan, since I spoke with you last, I received a call from the Director of the CHC Clinics, who have been doing some vaccination of students in our area, they're doing Norwalk, I believe, this weekend, and then the weekend after that is Stanford, I might have that backwards. But they're working with a few other school districts, so the Director is going to get back to me with the date. And I gave her an initial number of five hundred vaccines, but it, it sounds to me like it would be easy to increase that number to whatever we think we need, and they'll do a dedicated clinic at the Ward and Taylor location in Stanford, and then three weeks later, anybody who signs up will have their second appointment at the exact same time, just three weeks later, so I think we've made some headway with getting a clinic for kids sixteen, seventeen and eighteen years of age. This is not a clinic, it's only for, for students, it's not a clinic for, for other people in your homes. At this time, it would just be for our high school students.
Well, that is absolutely hot off the press right there.
Just about an hour ago, I talked to her.
Thank you, Alicia. I will open it up for board questions or comments. Mrs. Stein.
Hold on. Hi, good evening. I would just reiterate what Mr. Dineen mentioned in his opening remarks tonight about reminding parents that are awaiting test results to not send their kids to school. Could we have that in whatever communication you send out, Dr. Adley, about spring break protocols? I think a reminder does need to go out, I've had a lot of questions about that, and I just think sometimes in the volumes of stuff parents get, we sort of need bright red in bold, like just some reminders, because I think as the spring has hit, things are relaxing, parents and students, you know, we're all getting a little COVID fatigue, but maybe some bullet points on the, on the key essentials for students and parents.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Good points. Mrs. Ritchie.
I think the
Here you.
This is, this is the April seventh one. Sorry. Okay. I deliberately, well deliberately, haven't touched by teaching and learning, we're going to, but we'll talk about this issue first of all.
Mrs. McCammon.
Always till teaching and learning.
Okay, good, thank you. Any further questions for Alicia and David, and thank you both for your time, and thank you again for all the hard work that you've done behind the scenes and the clinics for the teachers, and thank the teachers also that are listening in for participating, but thank you both for your tireless efforts.
Thank you.
Maroney.
So a question for me is, is with the teachers now vaccinated or soon to be fully vaccinated, do we have a, for lack of a word, an exit strategy for COVID in the, in the following months, especially for the elementary students who will not be getting a vaccine? Will anything change in the months of May and June?
Other than the, the, well, the teachers will not have to be quarantined primarily. Currently, that's, that's the maintained, Mr. Maroney. Currently, the, the three feet for vaccination requirements or quarantine and requirements is still in place. So that would be the, that would be the main, the main thing is we're not going to have to quarantine our staff.
Okay.
Those that are vaccinated.
Mrs. Parent.
Thank you. I have a question for just clarification from David. Admittedly, I think I'm pretty on top of things, and I was blindsided by these travel guidelines that were recently released. I just wanted to clarify, there is no way to test out of this travel quarantine recommendation, correct?
Well, the, the excuse me, the travel quarantine change, the only change is to exempt those who've been quarantined. Or, and I'm sorry, that have been vaccinated from being quarantined. Otherwise, the same status with respect to quarantining and testing does exist.
Right, but if my, my family were to travel over spring break, if I were going to do what is recommended by the CDC, I would have to have my children go remote for the week following, right, and they could not test out, so we came back on Friday, and we tested the following Tuesday, five days later, and it was negative, they could not go back to school. They would have to stay out the whole week.
As, as I understand it, the school policy has been ten, ten days.
Right now, I'm just saying by the state. There's, the state has
The state hasn't changed, yeah, the state hasn't changed that recommendation for those who are not vaccinated. That has not changed. The only thing that's changed is for those who have been vaccinated.
I, I think that the CDC, the State Health Department quotes the CDC's guidelines, which are once you come home to quarantine for seven days and be tested somewhere between day three and five, and then even if you're negative at day three, day four, day five, to remain in quarantine for the full seven days. That's, that's the recommendation, as I understand that, if you travel international, that's, you know, domestic, if you travel internationally, my understanding is you have to have a negative test before they will let you on the airplane to leave your country that you're visiting to return to the US, and then it follows the CDC recommendations are, again, seven days with a test between day three and five, even if it's negative, to remain in quarantine for the full seven days.
Mrs. Parent.
Has there been any consideration, I brought this up earlier this year about testing, and I know that we, we have not tested to this point. Again, it's another inconsistency with the guidelines, if international travel requires a negative test to come in, I can't travel to Italy, but I could drive to DC and have stricter, stricter guidelines placed on me. So is there any consideration given if we are not remote the week following break? Could we test all the kids at day between three and five, just to ensure that we are being safer than, than we have been? Or we have an extra pot of money that we essentially may return to the state? Just curious if any thought has been given to that.
That has not been planned.
We haven't looked into testing all students, no. I'm not sure where the resources for that would come from.
Well, we, along the way, we have, right, along the way, it was always felt that at that given time and place, it's one indicator, that's not a guarantee, that that was really the feedback from Dr. Kenefak and Dave and so on, so along the way, we have, but not in this case.
Okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Akman.
Yes.
So what I wanted to do, ultimately, ultimately, I, I believe the decision is going to be on how many staff members, now, not just the, how many staff members, it's a distribution of the staff members, it's it's what role do they play? So we have to analyze that tomorrow with our principals, and I want to just reassure our parents and our board members that our principals do everything they can, including covering classes themselves and administrators to make things work, but it just comes a point where, where it's not possible to do that. So I wanted to make sure, like you just heard a wee update from Alicia, we also have another update from the epidemiologist where we got here, which sort of confirmed that no, this is the position, you still should be doing that. So things change, and I wanted to make sure whatever, whatever model we were in, we weren't scrambling then to get more information, so for instance, if tomorrow concludes that we're, we think we can cover, then I will also know by Friday morning, the children that are going to go remote and therefore tell our staff before they leave, right? So therefore, they, the, the weekend before that we come back, we don't have that scramble. It may well be tomorrow that before the, the parents get the information and I might know the decision. Right, so I, I recognize that, but I didn't want to have to scramble on the other end, I'll have to explain that to parents, it'll probably get lost in translation a little bit. But I, but I would, I can, I'll explain what I was trying to do, right? Both options are on the table at the moment, and in order to plan for both options, I need this information. Alicia, I thought that was the most responsible thing to do. And honestly, I still think that ethically and morally, we've been, we have been recommending the whole way along, our staff, our students, our parents, we follow the recommendations. I don't think turning a blind eye is, is ethically and morally right in this, in terms of health and safety. So anyway, that's, and I know you're not asking me to do that, so.
I would just ask that, you know, it's, to me, it's still a tight timeline to make a decision tomorrow, get more feedback in on Friday, and then we're, we're into the holiday, so I would just ask, like, whatever resources you need, if we go remote to make sure these kids, I think you've been through this drill before, we've got close to six hundred kids remote, but it seems like it's a tight timeline if we do go remote to make sure we get all those kids set up, so just whatever resources you need or however you need to do it, I just think the board would like to be apprised of that, and let us know if there's something that you need to accomplish that.
Currently, the, the principals are all set with plans, should, should this be the case. Now, the decision, I'm hopefully to make it tomorrow, but it's Friday morning, just Friday morning, but it, but I hope to make it tomorrow, but principals are ready for, for the students.
Mrs. Akman.
Terry, I'm like, sorry. Actually, I love the button. It, it, I just think in some ways, we need to look at the, the, the position we're putting parents in, if schools are opening, and no one at this table has ever debated that kids learn better in person.
Yes.
On the same hand, we're saying please respect the CDC guidelines, so you're making this choice that is, is a really difficult one. I guess the question would be, how many people are traveling, and if we know those numbers and it's not feasible, I, I would urge the administration to make a decision that doesn't put parents in a conflicting situation. It's a, it's a very, sorry. It's a very gray area, and I'm a very black and white person, and this is making me very uncomfortable of being in, in the gray and making a call, is it better to send my kids in school where I know they learn better, or do I follow the guidelines that the CDC is putting in front of me? It's a, it's a, I feel like it's almost, the, the guidelines are more strict on families now than they were prior to. So with these guidelines and benefits.
Yes, they happen.
Guidelines that if you're vaccinated. I mean, that, so that's where I'm really struggling, is if this is new information.
No, it's not, no, it's not new information, and that is not new information, we've been sending that regularly.
It's just that people are now, it's really understanding.
Right. Right. And also now is the time where everybody's like, lots of people are going to travel, right? We've been dealing with it in smaller doses and I would just say we're recommending that you follow the CDC guidelines. I've got my health professionals here telling me, I've got the State Department of Public Health telling me. That's why I think I currently have to advise people to do what they do. Yeah, maybe they do have a choice, Tara, but all I can say, recommend to follow the CDC guidelines.
So I agree. I guess that's what I'm saying. I think we all understand that the CDC or the health officials, not the nine of us at this table, but they are also recommendations. So we are creating a situation where someone is making an individual choice for their family, which I can respect, the effects of which are felt by lots of families and teachers. So there is a balance there that is a district at some point, the district needs to make a decision. And so I don't envy you for being the one to make that decision.
Oh, there's nowhere in this one. That's okay.
I don't think, I think we get the information, we make a decision.
Yes.
And again, I think just to reiterate the point, when people come home and people are not feeling well or showing symptoms, stay home. If you're going through the process or making an appointment for a test, before you get the test, stay home. I think that's the best course of action to protect everyone and continue to do the right thing. So you, you're working on the data in terms of teachers that are traveling. So you'll have that tomorrow and understanding where you stand with that.
Yeah, well, I have it now. It's all submitted and I honestly, I have not looked at it just yet. I came in late this afternoon and.
Okay. Mrs. Richie.
I just add and reiterate every day, the sooner we can get information to parents, the better. Obviously, every Friday is the break. It begins and people are going to check out. So I would just suggest that as soon as you can make and you're comfortable making that decision, the better it is for our community to make sure that they have plans for when either we're back in school or remote. And just as soon as we can have that decision, the better.
Mrs. Akman.
Well, last I would just add, this is not a board decision and I think we recognize that. We all want kids in school. We want our schools open. So what you can do to maintain our schools open for the longest period of time. And if that means we have small closures to maintain the rest of the year. I mean, there are choices here, but I think as a board, we need to affirm, we trust that you'll make the right decisions for the healthiest school year possible.
And I would say too, I want to again, recognize David and stuff because we're one of the first schools out the door with the vaccination, believe it or not. In order to get all our staff vaccinated, so. You know, we couldn't have done that much earlier, just the way it falls.
I think it's just that gray areas, everyone has said, we're doing all the right things. And in terms of school being open, sports, but we just have to continuously be careful and be cautious make those decisions. So any further, yeah, Mrs. Stein.
Fine question because I had some questions today about it when the survey went out. If we do make the move to go remote next week for those families that aren't traveling, will athletics still be running or after school programs?
If you are quarantined, if you are quarantining, you can't play in athletics. I understand that's another choice people are going to make, right?
I just want to clarify it.
But other than that, we will go around.
But if school is remote and schools are not closed.
Oh, yes.
Extracurricular activities will continue, much like the fall and the winter.
Right.
Good. Thank you. Any further questions for David or Alicia? Again, thank you both for your time this evening and all your hard work. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for joining us.
All right. Good night.
Good night. So I thought we would, if you don't mind, have a few minutes on just teaching and learning some of the things that we're seeing. And then I'll have a concluding comment after Mr. Trampers, Sherr's remarks.
Great. Thank you. As Mr. Dunne stated, we've had a tremendous amount of time of in-person learning. So when I think about this year and where we are, and I have many successes to talk about. Part of it is because we have been in person all year. So there's a national narrative that Darian doesn't necessarily fit all the time because we've actually been in school. Our work started back last summer in June when we were planning to open the school year as a normal year, but being prepared that that might not happen. So we had an additional curriculum institute in August. And at that time, we really focused on prioritizing standards and deciding what is the most essential information that we need students to learn. That turned out to yield some tremendous benefits because when we elementary results, we are largely performing at or above grade level in math and literacy on all of our benchmark assessments. We have one more assessment window this spring to look and to dig a little bit more closely and disaggregate that data, but also make sure that we are on trend with how we've performed in the past. Some reasons that that's happening, as I've been working with the grade level leaders and the curriculum team to understand the why. Because even though we've been in school, it has been a very different year. Teachers have expressed that they've really been able to target instruction in a new way. Think about planning with greater intention, focused on questioning different ways of assessing and integrating instructional technology. So when we ask that question of, I think it's Mr. McCann's favorite question of what have we learned as a result of COVID? I've been asking teachers, what have you done differently as a result of COVID? And I'm hearing a lot about the actual shifts that they've made in pedagogy. And that's been really getting at that question in a different way. And the targeting instruction through the DI blocks, through Zoom breakout rooms, extra help sessions and what we've called boost groups have also been important ways to, to really give students that need some extra support that instruction all the time. Similarly, with the secondary level, secondary math is on track due to prioritizing standards and adjusting the scope and sequence. And again, really focusing on what are the most important standards. So we're anticipating that students can start their next course right where they have, the same with elementary and that. Acceleration workshop that I've mentioned several times, we're starting next year with grade level standards and course level standards. We will certainly fill in any of the places that we need to fill in, but we're not going to operate in a deficit model because we don't need to operate in deficit model. Similarly, in secondary English, through writing conferences, every, everything indicates that students are, are on trend with their writing. And in world language, through Zoom especially, there's a lot more opportunities for one-on-one and teacher-to-student dialogue. So they're able to actually converse with students in a different way. And Christina Mauricio reported that we are on track to award the Connecticut SEAL of Literacy to the largest group of graduating seniors since the program's inception. So, so all the things in the reports that I've received. And looking ahead, for me, a big piece is establishing the new elementary curriculum team to help this planning. I'm working with grade level leaders and department chairs who will similarly work with their teams so we can identify any concerns that they have. So we can plan our summer curriculum writing institute to address those needs. Continuing to prioritize grade level standards is certainly a key. And then thoughtful integration of SEL and making sure we're embedding that across grade levels and disciplines. So overall, it's good, really good news to report, but definitely more data to dig into, which I'll report out as, as the curriculum's available.
Great. Thank you for that update. Mrs. McCann.
First of all, I love the update. Thank you. But more specifically, I know there were some questions you all received about kids who are quarantining. So there, some of what I asked may be more appropriate in response. But I know we have some kids who are disproportionately impacted by those quarantines and that's just part of the deal. But have we found that we need to do anything differently to support those, those students educationally or social emotionally? As a result?
We're certainly anticipating, especially for students that have had a great period of remote learning, that we need to train some staff with some look for's and listen for's with students as they're coming in. So Dr. McCarthy is developing a plan and will work with our school psychologists, who will then work with our teacher teams to make sure that they know what to look for and how to address that as we're starting the new year, for sure.
Thank you.
Any further, Mrs. Akman?
So as we talk about SEL and metrics, and we have had our elementary school children in, I'm happy to say for as long as, as long as we have. But we've heard a lot about this diversity issue and we've heard a lot. We even heard our speakers tonight about it. We've also heard about kind of teaching and learning. Where are we on that? Where are we on talking to these kids or looking at how we're altering curriculum? Because we are facing really complex problems and not in, you know, distinct instances, but it seems to be over time.
So the auditing, so to speak, and having a process of how we look at curriculum as we're going into writing. And we've started looking at different models and we'll definitely implement that as we go into curriculum writing this summer. A big piece in how we talk as a community, when it comes to equity work, it's really important that a district develops their language as a community as to how they're going to talk about equity. Because there are many different ways and approaches and there's, there's a foundation and a common understanding that we have to build. And we have to measure where people are coming into the conversation and have a plan for not only educating our students, but educating our staff. So they're comfortable talking to students and developing a level of readiness within the community as well. So it's very complicated. It's, I would say my greatest area of passion, and I've done the work before, but it takes a lot of thoughtful planning to make it happen. And I love hearing the level of readiness that we heard tonight. But that doesn't negate the heavy lift that it actually is.
No, and I would agree with that. And but I think what especially one of the speakers said that was so powerful and we've heard before is well, teaching these things can create anxiety in children. And I, I actually would agree with the speaker that it seems that not teaching these issues creates much deeper seated issues that have unhappy adults in the long run. So it's, it's difficult work, but I think at this point, I'd be very proud of this district to really dig into that and roll up our sleeves. And I think it goes hand in hand with our SEL, making all learners feel welcome. So I would just urge to continue that work. I know you are committed to it and so is Dr. Adley, but I think the board should, on teaching and learning, this is something we should keep coming back to. Are we doing it right? Can we do it better? How can we best learn to address these complicated issues?
Yes, and I, and I thank you all again for the strategic plan because it certainly shapes the path for us to do that work as a district. And I agree with everything you're saying.
I think to Mrs. Akman's great points and to everything you just said, Mr. Trandberg, I like the whole update that you gave on teaching and learning. And maybe we can incorporate that into our regular update and then align a little break out around the diversity and inclusion conversation we just had as that continues to develop in the district. And any input you can give us in terms of how and what you're doing with the great PTO organizations that have stepped up and want to contribute and help too. That would be appreciated. Thank you. Mrs. Parent.
I would just, I think, I think it was Dr. Adley who mentioned that the recent graduates of high school have shared what their views are and feel strengths and weaknesses coming out of high school. And I think it's really important that the district consider moving forward that we are not only churning out great academic students. We're not turning out great athletes, but we're churning out good people. And I think that we need to recognize that that is our number one goal and moving forward together with that is our, is our priority.
Also, thank you, Mrs. Parent.
I very much appreciate the board advocacy and support for the issue that we've been talking about. Thank you. Oh, are you done? There's any more questions?
I think we're good. Thank you, Mr. Trandberg.
I just wanted to mention just as, as we continue to talk about things we've learned. One of the things we're learning and actually want to try and continue, so it's a heads up to the boards in that capacity, the high school schedule. So the high school schedule is a block schedule, as you know. We've experienced this year that I'll say I've been in a successful arena type thing. We'd like to use, we have been, current information that I have has remained the same from the State Department. A plan, you need to be spaced out. You need to have mitigation strategies, plan for the first quarter. That's the best and latest information I still have on that regard. So if we're doing that, that's an opportunity for the, the, the high school to continue the block schedule with an opportunity to really have the staff evaluate, I'd call it its effectiveness, right? If, if, this is an opportunity that doesn't come along too often because for staff, for high school staff in particular, not necessarily Darian, but just in general, it's a, it's a very heated topic, right? This has provided an opportunity to experience something that you may not have experienced only because it provided the opportunity and they were insightful enough to design something like this. So they're going to continue the block schedule for the most part, the way it's in at the moment and use as an opportunity to evaluate, should we do a block schedule moving forward after next year? Right? The pros and cons of it, it will be more of an opportunity to have, to evaluate it in a truer sense because hopefully we're, as we go along, kids will be able to actually be in groups together. We'll be able to work collaboratively together. Right now, you're teaching a block schedule, but the instructional practices are in the 1950s in the sense of structure, just the way people, kids are sitting. Being in a block schedule demands more independent work, more collaborative work. This will be an opportunity, a great opportunity for the staff to evaluate how well that's working, report back to the board and do an evaluation of it with the intent of either staying the same, doing some sort of version of block or a block for the following year. So just, it's just a nice opportunity. And do know they also evaluate and have had discussions about open ends and those types of things. But that, the schedule thing, because we have to move forward with the schedule, right? We do have to move forward with a schedule because kids need schedules and this is the time of year sort of to look at it. So that is their intent for, if the board has questions, otherwise I'd be happy to consider them or otherwise. But I just wanted to add that. I do want to say to, I do want to say to our children, our students, to date, they've been phenomenal. Now, like, okay, so we've got spring term, in the middle of a spring term, it tends to be, who knows, right? But they've been very responsible and I give a lot of credit to that because there's a potential for that not to be the case.
Thank you. Mrs. Akman.
Can I just make a note that the board may need to take action if that's the intention for next year? So maybe we could circle up and figure out if we need to take actions because we might need a little more. But in order to change that schedule, there may be action. So if that's, if that continues to be your plan, we should research what we might need to do.
If it continues to be found just to keep it as it is for next year?
A permanent block schedule, we think at one point required action of the board, maybe in this new environment it does not. But if that's your goal, you should just know what we need to do so we don't hinder it from a teaching and learning perspective.
Good. Makes sense. Thanks for the point. Good. Any other further comments or questions? Okay. So we cover spectatorship and celebrations.
The celebrations, I've just sort of talked about like prom's graduation. The prom guidelines are meant and graduation guidelines, believe it or not, are meant to come out today, tomorrow, who knows. But it's meant to come out, sorry, it shouldn't be, but it's meant to come out this week. But honestly, I'm not sure if it does. Hopefully it will then. But the guidelines, the sort of hints we've been getting along the way is it could be outside. I think the last time I was at the table, I shared some things about the prom. I don't, just don't want to steal the high school standard with the kids and the incidents that they want to make, so.
I just think as soon as the guidelines come out, if nothing major has changed from the guidelines we understand now, locking in and just confirming those dates to the community would help. Thank you. Mrs. Richie.
Sorry to go back, but I just, I pulled out our strategic plan and I noticed that it's establishing a diversity and equity team is part of that. And so as we move along, I guess I would like to know how that's coming into play with the process. And is that team in place? When will it be in place? And how is it going to inform the work as we move along? You don't need to answer right now, but this is something else.
Got it. Thank you.
It did be a good point as part of that kind of regular update. Thank you, Mrs. Richie.
Okay. Are we good, Dr. Adley?
Yes, Mr. Trandberg.
Good. Thank you. Moving along, B, further discussion on this school year 22 budget. You know, we kicked it off talking about the Board of Finance has moved forward our budget. RTM Education is meeting this evening. I'm not sure if they will have any questions, but they will submit them to us. So we put this on here if there was any further discussion around the budget or the process going forward. Yes, Mrs. Richie.
Okay, so John Zagotski speaks very quickly and he spoke very quickly last night. So I just wanted to get clarification about, I know where we are on the operating budget, but clarification, and it's probably good for the public to know where we are on the capital side of things. Because some of the items are going to be bonded. So they were actually taken out of our budget. So they will appear in our budget on quarters after act. And so by my count, that was 1.15 million that was pulled out. That's the Royal School Roof and the Holmes Elementary HVAC design. Those two items were pulled out of our budget because they're now involved. Those two items were pulled out of our budget because they're now involved. So that would leave us at, sorry, you know, I'm not geek. Um, 1.1, 1.1, it's $1,162,921. Just wanted to make sure my math is right. Thanks.
Thanks, Mrs. Ritchie. Any other discussion on the budget? Good. Thank you. Thanks for everyone's hard work on that. And thank you, Rich, and the administration again. Um, update on elementary, middle school and high school enrollment for the 2021, 2022 school year. Uh, Mr. Rood.
Uh, while it's still early, uh, enrollment currently stands at 4,580 students against a projection of 4,604 students or 24 students below. Uh, overall, elementary sections are two below budget with kindergarten three below and then third grade, one above at Holmes. Uh, the third grade section at Holmes was one of the, one of the sections we identified during the budget of potentially tripping. So we'd be at 104 versus 106. Uh, so we'll continue to monitor enrollment each month as the school, uh, the new school year gets closer, uh, to set classes.
Rich, could you just, um, go over those initial numbers you said again in terms of actual and projected or?
Uh, so we have 4,580 students.
Correct.
Against the projection of 4,604.
Right.
So we're 24 under projection.
Okay.
Uh, elementary wise, we're three, uh, we're two sections below in the aggregate.
Thank you. Any additional questions or discussion? Mrs. Ritchie.
Okay, um, so I'm just, I just went back and looked at it, uh, the, there were four potential breaks, three of which were at already at 22, so pretty close to. But one of those is already basically broken. That would be the Holmes third grade class, is that correct? So we're already basically using one of our four, um, budget control positions hypothetically at this point.
Providing, uh, kindergarten enrollment meets projection, we would have to use one, uh, potential budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Mrs. Parent.
Um, can you just clarify why? So it seems to me like the Holmes third grade it's 66, you broke to four, but the Henley second is 66. And you, it's still at three, oh, because the actual is still at 65. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Thank you, Mr. Rudolph. Moving along, first reading and discussion of proposed Board of Education policies. 2700 Retention of Electronic Records and Information. 2800 Holes on Destruction of Electronic Information Paper Records. 3175 Code of Conduct Governing Procurements Under a Federal Award. Uh, Mrs. Stein and Ms. Zion.
Good evening. Um, for those of you who watched our policy committee meeting, you know it was a very quick meeting because there was not much discussion. These are pretty much performa. There was one question raised by Mr. Brown. Um, I haven't received any other questions to my knowledge from board members, so I think Mrs. Zion has an answer to Mr. Brown's question, even though he's not here. I'll also make sure to follow up with him if you want to.
Right. Mr. Brown had asked why, um, we were only adopting the Code of Conduct governing procurement under a federal award, which is required by 2 CFR Section 200.318 when there were other requirements. So the other requirements in that federal regulation regard purchasing. And Shipman and Goodman literally 15 minutes ago sent out its revision to the model purchasing policy, so we will bring that um, to the board, but there have been revisions. We did have a purchasing policy in place, but it's been updated recently. Or it will be updated.
Great. Thank you. And thank you both for all the work on this. I know it's, uh, tireless going through policies and getting updates.
If there are no questions, um, I just want to also reiterate, if you didn't watch our meeting, uh, Dr. Adley, Marge, um, and I had a discussion, Tara, about a policy audit. So finally, sitting down and really calling through the old book, the website and Shipman's model policies to make sure we have everything captured on our website. So that's something that, um, Marge and I, I hope her, will go through, um, most likely over the summer when things are quieter. So just for everyone's planning, yes, Jill.
Has there been any thought or discussion about whether or not we would continue to use Shipman? I know that Cabe has a pretty robust, um, sample policy guide that a lot of districts around us do use. And that could also be advantageous. I didn't know if that had ever been looked at.
So the the Cabe does have robust model policies, but the additional support that Shipman provides us is just invaluable. I mean, Glenn Zatune is an expert on every, has the answer to every question I ask. I don't think Cabe has that same support.
So does.
One and down, Shipman advises Cabe.
Right.
Yes.
Yes. Jill, would it be possible? I'm just wondering if if, because it looks like a lot of our policies are coming directly from Ship, coming directly from Shipman. I'm just wondering if there's any efficiency to be gained by sort of going through Cabe and then maybe clarifying with Shipman where appropriate.
Well, we can also check through the Cabe. Right. And we can do it. Dr. Adley gives updates.
That'll all come to light, I think, as you go, good points. I think it'll all come to light as you kind of go through this audit.
Especially, my question when we had this discussion is where is there a complete Board of Ed policy manual that we can cross-reference? And then that provides us and puts us on a track with regular updates. So I think that's what will come out of that work.
We we do get, we do get updates from from Cabe. Um, so we can use, we actually use those to cross-reference a little bit also, but but Marge is right, generally speaking, I don't know if you've got, if you've got any sort of significant usually like DCF or policy or something. Uh, even people who use Cabe go go back to their their console.
Thank you.
But we can cross-reference.
Yes, we can. Yes.
Not a problem at all.
Good points. Thank you. Again, this is a first reading, so as you go through them again, any questions or comments, please bring them back and then they'll be back for action. Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Thank you, Ms. Stein. Moving along, action on non-renewal of certified staff working under one-year contracts, long-term substitutes and permanent building substitutes. Ms. Zion.
The Board of Education reviewed in executive session the list of the long-term substitutes and permanent building substitutes, which are the only positions up for non-renewal this year.
Great. So any questions or comments on that? Since it was reviewed, we'll move right to a motion. Uh, motion for the non-renewal of certified staff working under one-year contracts, long-term substitutes and permanent building substitutes as presented by Ms. Zion. Uh, Mrs. Stein, second by Mr. Maroney. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Action items, personnel items. Ms. Marge, Zion.
Yes, so as Dr. Adley mentioned before, um, the sad news is Mary Michelson's retirement, although we wish her well. But the exciting news is the appointment of Kevin Monret, who, um, is going to be an exciting addition to our facilities department. Um, I think he could be at some point the next director of facilities. He is a superb professional and Rich and I are thrilled and Mike Lynch thrilled to welcome him.
Can you honestly say you can replace Mr. Lynch?
She said someday.
He's MacGyver. He's MacGyver.
I said someday, but don't worry, he'll be talking to me in the morning.
Mr. Lynch to leave. Thank you, Marge. That's good news to hire someone new as part of that team. That's terrific. Um, on appointments.
I think we still have that as a a first and a second and a third for the PAR.
The PAR. So we have a motion to approve the PAR. Thanks, Jill. Mrs. Stein. Second by Mrs. Ackman. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thanks for keeping me on track. And then appointments, we have a motion to appoint Julie Drohler as the Director of Elementary Education. Mr. Maroney, second by Mrs. Ritchie. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Um, Mrs. Drohler, congratulations from the board. Um, thank you for all that you've done over at Inlee. This is an exciting, uh, new role for you and, uh, we wish you well and, um.
How do I raise my hands, babe?
What's that?
It wasn't her. She's trying to speak.
Oh, okay. I'll give you a moment, Mrs. Drohler, if you'd like to say something.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am honored and excited to be working with this wonderful group of educators, parents and students and the board and can't wait to get started.
Great. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mrs. Drohler.
Thank you.
Cut our machine talking. Uh, we'll move over to public comment. Michelle.
Good evening. If you would like to make public comments, please use the raise hand option. The facility will identify you and call you. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Username Owen, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Drew. Sorry, my, uh, my son has been using my computer for e-learning. Um, he's currently in quarantine. Uh, my name is Elizabeth Drew and I live at 14 DeBois Street. Um, I'm just writing to express my concern about some things that I've heard about, um, the children learning remotely after spring break. Our family with a kindergartner and a second grader at Henley, each who has spent time in quarantine this month due to school exposure for a total of 20 days for our family, has chosen to remain here over spring break so that we can send our kids to school safely. We know the risks of being in school and we are experiencing them in real life as our kids have been in quarantine so much. But school is essential. While we recognize that some folks will be going away, we do ask those parents to take into consideration keeping their children home. Our children deserve the right to in-person learning. Please allow them the opportunity to do so. Our teachers are vaccinated. There is no reason our children, especially our young elementary students, should be sitting in front of a computer to e-learn. Thanks so much for your listening ears and constant work, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Drew.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Okay. Thank you all for the public comment earlier in the seat and just right now. Thank you very much. With that, uh, a motion to adjourn. Uh, Mrs. Ackman, second, Mr. Maroney, all those in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and have a good, safe spring break. Thank you.